Today is the 17th of May, 2021. It's 5:00 PM and this is a remote Zoom meeting for the Town of Lead Your Permanent Municipal Building Committee. My name is Steve Jeskowicz. I'm the chairman. I call this meeting to order. Meeting is also being recorded, just so everybody knows, so townspeople can play it later. So we'll go ahead and start with a roll call. I'll start with myself, Steve Jeskowicz, Chair.
Pete Beckett, our Vice Chair.
Gary Tominski, Member.
Gary Schneider, Member.
Kate Palma Herb, Member and Board of Ed Rep.
Kate, that's you as 1-3, right? Phone number?
Yep. Yes, that's me.
All right, the rest of you that are on the line, if you'll please identify yourself for the record.
Steven June, Silver Petraselli.
Dan Hettler with ONG.
Chris Rizzi, ONG.
Mark Jeffco with ONG.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started then. All right. Again, this is a special meeting, everyone, so we have to stick with the agenda tonight. And now that I closed my agenda screen, let me open it back up again. First item on the agenda is minutes approval from our meeting from 3:00 May, 2021. Those minutes are available online and I will entertain motions to approve those meeting minutes.
Moved.
Who just moved that?
Pete Beckett, I think so.
All right, Pete made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second now.
Saved by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes as written, signify by saying your name and eye. Steve Jeskowicz, Eye.
Pete Beckett, Eye.
Gary Tominski, Eye.
Gary Schneider, Eye.
Kate Palma Herb, Eye.
What was the last one?
Wayne just came in.
No problem. All right, those meeting minutes are approved. All right, we're going to move on now to our Lead Your School Improvement Project Item Number, Room Number 5 on your agenda. Just a little bit of an informational item to pass out to you. Last week, I attended a meeting in the mayor's office that was in person there, but it was also attended remotely by the fire marshal, the superintendent of schools, chairman of the Board of Ed, and the Wayne Facilities Director for the schools was there as well. It was a good meeting in that we had a chance to go through an awful lot of things. In that particular meeting, we did go through parts of the punch list, but we didn't go line by line. But we did talk about the general concern for closing these projects out when dates and things would occur. We met two weeks ago, and I think most of you that are on this call were on that call. And we did have some discussions as we went through that punch list very, very carefully, line by line. So what I'd like to do is to start out by, Wayne, you can start out with you, giving an overview of what's been going on the last few weeks in the schools, particularly, and then I'll let ONG talk a little bit. I know, Dan, I asked ONG to be able to give us a number of punch list items that we think have been closed, cleared, or recommended to be closed, cleared since our last meeting. I do know that pictures of things, as they've been cleared, have been floating around via email. That's a really, really good way of doing that, so that those of us that aren't in the school can see the condition of those things. And, you know, if we're talking about things, whether they're level or not, having a level on there is great in the picture. So with all that, Wayne, we'll start out with the Lead Your Middle School. And we do have some bills to pay, so to speak, tonight. But the focus of tonight's meeting will be on the progress we've made the last few weeks in getting punch list items cleared, so we can move both these school projects to close out with the state. Wayne?
Okay. A little bit of work has been done on the punch list there. Not an excessive amount. I do have a list that Dan sent me to review. I tried to get to it last week. I just couldn't. So I'm going to try and get to it tomorrow, so I can complete that and get it back to him. I did, was up in the attic area where they have to change order to make some changes to that for safety reasons, for railing or climb up or whatever they're going to do there. I did see that they poured a concrete slab over the existing trap door that went down to another section of the building. It looks like they ported around the existing ladder, so that ladder is now cast in concrete. And according to Steve June, that ladder was supposed to have been moved to line up with the hatch. Right now, only half of the ladder is under the hatch. The rest comes up under ceiling. So when you're climbing out the hatch, you're only got about half the ladder to use. And it's also not high enough. You're a good, oh, two feet at least, if not a little bit more below the hatch ladder.
Hey Wayne, which one? This is the middle school hatch you're talking about, right?
The middle school, yes.
Is one of the change orders that are in to address this? And now, based on what you're saying, Steve June, are you saying that this should have been not a change order? It was in the original plan, or are we talking about the actual change order?
I thought the change order was to add the handles or safety round when you're climbing up from the ground level into the attic space. This is going from the attic space to the roof. And I believe that was, Steve told me, that was part of the original project to move that.
Correct.
I can jump in and just clarify these things to move things along. The original ladder that was there was what we had spoke to about relocating. But after I looked closer at the ladder, it's really not. It was too narrow for my taste, and like you mentioned, it's too short. So the change order work does include a new ladder, cutting the old ladder out of the way.
So the change order that's already been processed, we've already paid for, will in fact resolve this?
Yes.
Okay. We are having some problems. I was out with Chris, walked the building last Wednesday, I believe. One of the reoccurring leaks that we have, they determined was an action air issue. Some leaking valves in the ceiling, not coming from the roof itself. The second one, they believe, was because of the damaged door and some openings in the, along the enclosure for the same air conditioning unit. So action air was going to come out and finally replace the door that was damaged by the roofer and seal up some openings. So we're waiting to get confirmation on that, so we can, you know, monitor, see if it's still leaking. We are having problems with JCI warranty issues. Their warranty expired on the 19th of April. There are some issues with the VFD on Unit 3 that they were out in February, I believe, early March, that they overrode and were supposed to take out the bench test and replace, and never did. Now they're claiming that it's no longer under warranty. So Dan, I'm going to need any information you have on notifications to them on that?
Yep, there's a history of what I found out to be the VFD that had previously tripped a few times. We've spoken to this particular VFD. When they came out to do the warranty work back in February, I believe it was, the determination was that the sensitivity on the VFD was in question, that there was maybe tripping due to oversensitivity of current. Now I'm understanding that they now, something happened again. And as Wayne described, there was a warranty call put in. I've directed them to perform the work, that I would take care of their invoice. What they wanted to do is take and bench test the VFD, which we'd have to do now in concert with occupancy.
Right, but that was all, that was all before the warranty was up. So there shouldn't be any warranty work. Now they're just, that we complained three or four times, now they're coming back and saying it's out of warranty.
Well, I think the initial call was before the warranty expired, and now the recent call is after.
So, yeah, well, they've had three to four calls on that unit. The initial one was almost a year ago. And then they were back again in, like I said, February or early March. At that point, they made another adjustment in it. They were back two weeks later and said they had to take it out the bench test it, which they never did. And now it's out of warranty.
So there's some more history to be confirmed? And then I'll bring everybody up to speed with a report.
Yep.
Wayne, just a question for you. Since you said that the overall warranty and the entire system, I know you're bringing up some specific items that have had a history of failure that were previously reported, but the rest of the system that has either performed correctly or not had any history of that, what is the plan for, and I realize it's outside the scope of the PMBC at this point, it's a supportive issue, but what is the plan to transition to your own maintenance contract for those systems in the school?
I have my HVAC vendor working on some of the issues now. So we will either enter into a contract with them or do a time and material as the events come up. The biggest concern I have right now is the fact that, you know, we got turned over this system back in, I think, December, January, when we finally got some decent training on it. And as we're getting into it now, we're starting to see anomalies. Like it's 70 degrees outside and the heat valve is opening up and heating the unit up to 90-something degrees and pumping those rooms with hot air. And then it happens for 10 or 15 minutes and it shuts down. JCI had no explanation for this. I've talked to, who's the JCI guy that's doing the controls? Jim Gassano? He doesn't understand it, has no clue why it's happening. So, you know, the more we're getting into it, the more oddball anomalies and stuff we're finding.
Okay, you done with the Lead Your Middle School?
Yeah, that's it for Lead Your Middle School, pretty much.
Okay, I'd like to shift over to ONG and then Steve June on the middle school. What you think has been accomplished in the last, since our last meeting? And what is the estimated closeout date for the remaining items that are left?
So I'll jump in here. The Lead Your Middle School punch list, as we reviewed at a meeting two weeks ago, from that last meeting, I thought I had it on my screen. Afraid I don't. That, oh, I know why. It's in Excel. There we go. I didn't, everything that was proposed, complete at the meeting two weeks ago, was sent to Wayne for back check. Since then, we've gone back out and completed the additional panel repairs that we spoke to two weeks ago. Also completed some odds and ends, carpet cut short, painting some masonry. The list was again forwarded out last week for Wayne's back check, as he just mentioned. As you mentioned, they didn't get to it last week, and we look forward to closing out what we've already submitted as complete. What remains open on the punch list for Lead Your Middle School are the four items related to the miscellaneous metals. As mentioned, the ladder move, the grabs, so that you can go up to the mezzanines. And then an extension for the roof hatch on the renovated portion of the space. So we have those four items open. And then one item for the blind chains. As we mentioned two weeks ago, the action was Wayne was going to take a look around at that condition, see if it was systemic in the fact that, or the options for repair, which would be to permanent anchor or just to, or utilize another adhesive, rather than try to drill into the millions. And then the other item I haven't closed yet is the ceiling tiles, which we've spoken to, you know, pretty extensively.
What's the current plan of action on the ceiling tile issue in those corners?
Chris was trying, I know he was concentrating on Gallup Hill, but he was going to go back, reset the tile. And, you know, for the dozen tiles that seemed to be problematic, he was going to use an adhesive to maintain them.
All right, so our Lead Your Middle School list is down to a fistful of items.
Those five, yep.
Okay. All right, Steve June, did you want to add anything? Do you have more?
Just one thing, that the roof protection item, the roof protector at the stairwell has been fabricated and is ready to install. The grabs that we are putting in for the mezzanine are also fabricated and ready for install. That ladder that we were just speaking to is not fabricated. So we're within a week or so of having the parts to be able to get out there to do that miscellaneous metals work.
Okay, Dan, we're going to approve some invoices tonight, or actually, they're transfers of funds to move funds from the school project back into the Board of Ed side for some radon testing that was done in the two schools. And the amount of, for Lead Your Middle School, the total amount is about $6,000, maybe a little bit more than that. With my question to you is, after all the roundy round we did with the plumbers and who was responsible for that, what is the best course of action for us to get a reimbursement of those costs, since they should have been performed by under contract?
Eastern Energy, who was responsible by contract to do that work, has been advised that the radon testing is a comeback cost to them. At this point, they don't have any funds left to, you know, for us to hold back, as far as payment goes. So I'm still in talking to them, whether she's willing to cut me a check or if I, you know, talk to some management at ONG, but we'll take care of that internally at ONG.
All right, but since we've already closed that project out, would we just receive a, would there be a change to that final bill, or would ONG just reimburse the town?
The latter.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else on the middle school? Dan?
Not for me, sorry.
All right, Steve June.
Nothing really to report, other than just waiting for the punch list to be completed. We're pretty much done, just waiting.
Steve, since those ladders and things that we're talking about here are, you know, the safety items here, they have to be installed a certain way, will SPA be out to inspect those once they're all installed?
Yes, without a doubt. We'll inspect the final punch list, too.
Okay, all right, moving on to the, and Chris Rizzi, you're on board, the same meeting here. Mark Jeffco, is there anything you need to say on the Lead Your Middle School before we move on?
Steve, the only thing that I have is, we went to set the benches, and I just forwarded an email with a layout in the locker rooms. And the benches don't work. There isn't enough clearance. So I sent a sketch off just now, actually, to Steve and Wayne for them to weigh in on it and give us some direction. Because the clearances that are shown, I think it was like 2-8 or whatever it was, it just doesn't work. So we'll just need some direction on that.
And that's, those clearances are ADA clearances or just general clearances?
ADA.
ADA, yep.
I would defer to giving Steve another chance to take a look at that document to determine if the minimums are ADA or just what we thought the wall-to-walls were.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, that's all I have, Steve.
I didn't want to jump in and, you know, say, yes, they're okay, or no, they're not okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, all right.
Steve, this is Kate. I have a question. It is specific to that ladder. I don't want to interrupt the flow, but either now or before the end of the meeting, I'd like to ask about it.
Go ahead now. It's on the middle school, please.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from Wayne is that there was a change made to the ladder where it was cemented in, and he was not expecting that. And then I'm hearing from Dan is that that was expected, because that was part of their plan of action, was to cement them in, and correct me if I'm wrong, but to cement that ladder in, cut it away, and then replace it with a different ladder. But I'm wondering why there wasn't some communication to our director of facilities to say, hey, after all this time, we're going to address this ladder issue. Here's our plan of action. We're going to cement in the old one. We're going to cut it away. We're going to replace it with a proper ladder. Shouldn't he have been informed of that plan before we went forward with it?
I can speak to that in that the concrete work that was done in the mezzanine was done last summer. That concrete slab that Wayne's referring to was part of an additional punch list item where I had some, I had a general trades contractor come in and pour concrete in the mezzanine to fill gaps, because the floor system at that time was determined to be raided. Steve, actually, Steve June brought it to my attention that we had gaps that were up in the floor system where we needed a concrete slab in order to maintain fire rating. But to your point specifically, Wayne was up to speed with the decision, but it was like nine months ago. We did that work last.
Okay.
And also, am I correct, Dan, that that detail was included in the change, the change order that we approved?
The concrete placement work was part of Scope Construction's contract.
The ladder that's going in, the new ladder, is all part of that change order?
Yes, it is. If anybody cares to take a look at the change order that was executed back in July of last year, the scope of work is clear.
Okay, all right. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you so much.
And Wayne, never mind. Wayne, I'll follow up with you to find out why it is that you feel that there's something.
That's fine. That's fine.
On the Gallup Hill School, I wanted to move on to the Gallup Hill School. I did see a lot of activity, at least in form of emails, pictures, back and forth on crash bars, doors, fire safety items from the Gallup Hill School. So Wayne, you indicated that some work had been done.
But there's actually been a considerable amount of work done at Gallup Hill.
Okay, let's go ahead and start there.
Okay, yeah, I don't have the most current updated list. I did go through the punch list that I was sent by Dan. Unfortunately, some of the items, while complete, are less than satisfactory. For example, in the cafeteria, there was a water leak before my time. It had been repaired and never painted. They came in and painted it. But they got the paint all over the blue steel column, the door frame. Just really non-professional work. Same way with, there was a couple of toilet paper holders that were falling out of the walls. You know, one was put back in, being taped to the wall. The other one had screws drilled through the face and screwed back in. Again, not really the type of quality of work that I would expect. That's just some examples. I will say that the responses I'm getting from ONG is much more agreeable and helpful over the last week or 10 days. I can say unequivocally that I think things are getting done. You know, I feel a total change in attitude. Action air was out for the noise in 168. He was able to hear it. He did bring a expert out last Wednesday who went over some possible solutions. We still don't have a permanent resolution to that. We still don't have, there are still a number of doors that the hold opens are not operating on. Chris, maybe you can answer this. On the, that door that had all the laminate peeling off down in the lower level? You had said you were going to repair that. I saw it was all taped up. Is that just temporary? Keep it from additional damage and stuff?
Somebody else put that tape on there, Wayne.
Okay.
But yeah, no, that's on the list to repair. Can we go back to the hold opens?
Yeah.
So we went through the entire building on Wednesday, myself, and made sure all the hold opens worked. There is maintenance involved with these hold opens. Over time, they do loosen up. So I included a video of how to adjust them in the emails I sent over.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, if they were all working and I'm in there a week later and they're not, I mean, that doesn't seem like regular maintenance.
Well, I'm just saying that. I went through every one of them. And some of them, maybe they're working and are on the old end of adjustment, but, you know, there is some requirement for you guys to go through and tighten them up. I can go through with your maintenance staff again. I got no problem doing that.
Right, but these were the same ones that were on my original list, that a week before, when I went through the list, weren't working, and then came back, you know, two weeks later, after you did it, they're still not working.
So it hasn't been two weeks later. It's only been, this was last Wednesday, that we had a hardware vendor out to go through and do a bunch of work to try to remedy this condition.
Correct.
And I appreciate the fact that since Wednesday of last week, you've gone back and you've tried a door, and the door doesn't stay.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
So there are a couple of hundred doors in there, and there may have been ones that got missed. So I think what we're trying to, what we're trying to meet the minds here is that we've gone through and replaced all of the hold open state hardware. We've gone through and now adjusted them again, you know, a month after they were initially installed. And on Wednesday of last week, after we spot checked and went through them again, you were able to find one that wasn't holding open. We'd like that opportunity to.
Four or five. I'll send you the list, yeah.
But what we want to do is get to the end. If this is a simple adjustment item, and there's four or five doors, then let's help you get those four or five doors to the position that works for you, and then we'll all be on the same.
If it is a normal adjustment thing that happens every six months to a year, I'm fine with that. Right. But like the original ones, you know, they were adjusted two or three days later, to a week later, they were failing again. It shouldn't be something.
And that's what we want to, I agree with you, Wayne. That's what we want to find out. We want to find out if, you know, we've gone so far now is to change all the hardware, upgraded it to something that performed better than the product's original spec. And if we have an opportunity to see if that's still not holding open doors. These are heavy wood doors, and we don't want them to not work.
No, that's fine. I understand, you know, and like I said, I do understand that they're a maintenance item to some degree, but it shouldn't be a weekly or, you know, every other week type of maintenance item.
But that's not the case. What we just described was something that was done at noon, and at 5:00 PM, wasn't working right.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Um, just so you know, Gallup Hill is back to school this week on Wednesdays. Middle School is still off.
Oh, that would mean next week on Wednesday, I could have the miscellaneous metals guy in there.
Yes. They will not be back till the week of June 14th.
Okay, because I'm not sure he'll have the, he may be able to get a couple of the items done on Wednesday, and then we'll finish up.
Yeah, Gallup Hill is back this Wednesday, but the middle school's not going back till the week of June 14th.
Okay, we'll get back to you with the schedule. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
All right, continuing on to the middle school?
That's pretty much it. You know, I will get through their next punch list as soon as I get it with the things that were, the original one I did go through, got back to them. The, but I assume they did more work Wednesday. There were people in the building. But like I said, you know, I'm seeing progress. I'm seeing actually a lot of progress.
Dan, based on the emails I saw, how many items, and I'm not asking for a specific, exact number, but how many items do you feel have been closed in the last two weeks in the Gallup Hill School? I realize there's different definitions of closed, whether they've been reviewed by, you know, whether the trade says they're done, you say they're done, Wayne says they're done. We're using ONG in the middle, and I know Chris has been out in the school. What do we think that number has been reduced by?
27.
Out of roughly?
75.
In the last two weeks?
In the last five, and yes.
Last week.
Actually, since we held this meeting.
All right, I wanted to have a short discussion. We had a discussion about concrete at our last meeting. And this is something that's gone back and forth. We had some discussion, and some that the superintendent's been vocal about. It's my understanding, based on the phone call we had the other day, that the the concrete trucks that there, we had requested the load tickets on, that was a specific complaint by a neighbor or a resident that lives nearby, and not really a neighbor to the school, that the concrete performance in question is not in that area. Because we had talked about pulling concrete cores and things. So I'm trying to get my hands around this. So the concrete that we think there's a possibility that it was on the truck longer than it should have been, isn't where we're having the problem.
At this point, no.
Okay, so I guess the question I ask is if there's, if there's an area of concrete that we think is questionable about its strength, these are sidewalks and curbs, by the way, not structural, that we should pull cores and test those cores to, since ONG has been able to come up with the load tickets on those things, and there was questions, and they were requested many times, pull in some cores from there and send them off to have them broke, obviously, to patch the holes. That should be done. But if the area that there's question about is not even anywhere near there, and it's over by the other side where the buses load and stuff, that has nothing to do with that. So I wanted to get some. So I wanted to get some thoughts on that base, because we were going down the path that we thought that's where the problem was. And there's a, there's some concrete performance questions in another area that aren't related to that, that were poured almost a year before that, if not more. So the, I think it was over a year. There's the area that, that the tickets were questioned on were some of the last pours we did where ONG had their trailers. So I guess the question is, you know, ONG suggested pulling cores. Are you still suggesting we pull cores from that area, even though right now we are not seeing any problems, just based on the concern about the length of time on the truck?
The, that area, I physically saw the load tickets and they were on the truck an excessive amount of time. That's when I asked for the load tickets for the rest of the pores going back to the original. My concern is, and again, it was brought up in the meeting with the mayor, was that there or I forget who it was that said it, but he is familiar with concrete and building, doesn't believe that core testing will give us results of the problems we're having, which is the chipping and flaking of the, the top surface of the concrete.
But Wayne, that's an area, that's not the area that we're questioning the load tickets on. You're just saying that if, if, if in, you know, June of 2020 or 2019, we had a potential issue that, that can be, that, that same issue existed on all the other pores?
Well, we don't know.
But we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the cause of, of a particular problem.
Correct.
And.
It could have been a lot of things. Temperature, it could have been, you know, it rained on it. It could have been a ton of different things.
Right, and, and things that have been offered out is, you know, use, you know, I don't know if we use salt on there or not, or all kinds of other things with his first year use of concrete. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if you were even, if you were, Wayne, if you were the director of facilities then?
I wasn't for the first year, but I do know that we haven't made any changes in what we're using. And we're using Concrete Safe Base Ice Melt. You know, not salt-based. That doesn't mean that something didn't spray up from the, the salt we're using on the asphalt.
Right, my, well, my, my point on this one is when we were chasing all this down, the point, we were focusing on particular pores in a particular area, and that's not where we're seeing the performance issues. So my question now back to ONG is, because we do know, even though we're not seeing necessarily performance issues in that area, are you still recommending, this is over to ONG, that we pull cores there to later rest any concerns about that?
I'm going to jump in, maybe Mark has an opinion on it, but the understanding has changed so that for me, I wouldn't recommend the core if, because I don't know what the condition. I thought the condition here was a concern over the strength of the concrete, which you can get from a, you know, from a core test and a compression break. If there's a delamination or a checking issue, I'd like to see, I'd like to walk it, see it, perhaps bring one of our QA QC guys down and have him give us his opinion of it to see, you know, what there's, like Wayne said, there could be many root causes for something, for the different types of failures that, that you're talking about. You know, if it's, if, if, you know, if the concrete was overworked, it could be that there was too much, you know, too much cement just material at the top layer. If the rain came, you know, then there's a little bit of water on the top. There's various solutions or, you know, depending on how bad it is, you want it, you could replace. But again, it's, it's how much and how big of an area. I, I, the last time, or the, the last time Wayne and I walked on this was July of last year, at which time it was unclear to me what limits, and then we, we kind of left the issue alone until we came back to it this spring.
The reason I ask that question is my understanding of the problem changed dramatically the other day in a meeting when I learned that the area in question is not the area that we felt that we knew the concrete had been on a truck too long, but there were two totally different areas. That changed my perspective on this problem from a, you know, what we would potentially be able to talk to the vendor that poured that concrete about and what our recourse might be. So I think you need to get out and take a look at that concrete or ONG does, bring out your best concrete folks. And let's take a look at that. And if, 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 if they're, depending on the severity of this, we need to come up with, you know, what, what the right answer is for that. That was something that we learned new just in this meeting the other day, but that area is not the area in question. So more to follow on that. So my question now to ONG is when, you know, we had a date before that was the end of April. We're now in the middle of May. What are the items that you feel cannot be completely closed out in the middle school during the month of May? What is ONG's prediction on when that punch list will be complete? You gave us some ideas, those last couple of miscellaneous metal items in the middle school. So the two-part question is, one, when will I see the invoice? Will it be the final invoice? And number two, when will we see the items that are on the list today complete?
So just to clarify your comment, you stated middle school, but really what we're talking.
I'm sorry, Galapagos School.
Galapagos School. And so I'm, I sent over to the team, Steve, Steve, Wayne and yourself and Lisa a few minutes ago, a copy of the current status of the punch list. Items highlighted, the 26, 27 that I mentioned are highlighted complete. The remaining items all have dates. As I've spoken to Chris, I do think that the next two weeks would wrap up the, the items. I think the, the latest items we have, I, I I left justified anything that was out into June. And it's because we're rebuying these replacement doors. So I have a couple of items out as far as June 11th. And a few items on June 1st. But other than that, so you're looking at two weeks and then a couple of doors to be swapped out in mid-June.
These are the doors are delaminating or are these other doors?
Yeah, we just released those to get replaced and they're, they're in fab.
Okay, and these are classroom doors that have the, you know, custom light on one side, or is this where we at?
They're entering into the cafeteria off the main corridor.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, cafeteria, sorry.
All right, Wayne, is that, does that schedule and prediction, with the exception of those doors, that everything, this is what we, we anticipate. We have another meeting on, Lisa, help me out here, it's June. Let's see, our first meeting is June 7th, is that correct? I'm checking my calendar.
I was muted, sorry, June 7th.
June 7th. So our June meeting, we would have, in fact, the, we would have only doors remaining in the middle school at that point?
Um, I think we'll still have some HVAC issues because we have the heating issues from last year that weren't resolved before the heating issue ended, the year ended.
Right, and I want to bring up something on that. Wayne, the other day you made a comment that as we move it, if we have heating and cooling issues and they make any changes in the system, that we have no way of knowing how that's going to perform in the next season, whether it's cooling or heating. And my concern there is that we could get ourselves into a multi-year loop of we can never end, because once we get into a heating season, we're now concerned is the cooling season going to be okay? We get in the cooling season, we adjust something, and now we say, well, we don't know if it's going to fix the heating season. So at that point, we will never be able to ever close the project out. So what is the level of, of, of that we need to get to so that we can close the project out?
Well, at this point, there's two rooms from the heating season. 148, which they could never get to temperature. The only way we get temperature in there was because I had to put a space heater in there. Without the space heater, they were running 63 to 64 degrees. We were able to bring it up to 68, 70 with the space heater. And you got 201, which was running way hot, running in like 76 to 78 degree range. Even in the milder weather, it's still going up to 76, 78. We've been able to override the set point for the heating cooling at this point to force the chill around a little earlier than the system said it should. And we've been able to control the temperature in 201 and bring it down to a more reasonable level.
Is 201 the one above the boiler room?
Yes.
Okay, Dan, are we under the belief, and Steve, June, maybe you know what Marty's worked on this, that 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 room being above the boiler room may just need some type of a supplemental system to do something differently?
There was talk in our office about that and Marty said, no, that would not affect the room itself.
The boiler room being below, you mean?
Correct, yes.
There's not enough heat rise through the floor?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right, then, then the system has to be modified to do that. The other room that you can never seem to get hot enough, is that correct, Wayne?
Yes.
That, what has been the approach to try to solve that one? You know, short of adding radiant heat to it in one room? Dan?
The, you know, honestly, I don't have a good solution or I haven't had enough time to work with JCI or Action Air to understand what, you know, what an isolated room fix would be. We have, you know, we always have the option of adding more air to that space. But it doesn't seem to be airs not doing the trick. We have a cold condition at the exterior wall, so you know, we balance the system to design, there's enough heat coming in by hot water. There's enough forced air coming into the room by hot air. You go beyond that and you have to really contemplate the different choices of either, you know, providing the air in a different location in the room, maybe doing some wall washing with registers or providing a supplementary, supplementary form of heat. But frankly, I have not pursued hard enough with, with Marty and HVAC, both Action Air and JCI. You know, what would be a pointed look solution?
Yeah, Steve. Question. What effect did the vermiculite removal in that room have? I mean, that had to be supplying some kind of insulation value on that outside wall.
I'm not aware of any condition unique to that space. Is there something you're aware of that, where they removed exterior insulation there?
You took the vermiculite out. That's the room that the vermiculite came out of?
The one that Mike Brennan did.
Your time, that Mike Brennan was there. Yeah, that exterior wall was leaking vermiculite into the classroom space. So they took some bricks out on the outside and sucked all the vermiculite out of that wall.
Wasn't that at the end of the main level classroom, farthest closest to the playground?
Yeah, that's, that's 148. Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry. That's 119. Wrong room. I'm sorry. Yeah.
But the, the only reason I ask that question on the supplemental is this. How many rooms are in the Galapagos School? I'm guessing 300?
That's a little high, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, not just classrooms, but total number of room. I mean, and we have a, a particular problem with two. We could spend two, three years chasing the system as opposed to the installation of, you know, perhaps something supplemental in those one or two rooms due to whatever the particular situation is. I'm not saying to give up, but I'm saying is that at some point, it may just be that simple. I mean, if Wayne putting a space heater in there makes a difference, a permanently mounted radiant heater somewhere that does the trick, you know, may in fact be the best solution as opposed to chasing this thing down forever and ever. Because every time we make a change to try to fix this room, we start busting up the other rooms and that's where we got into this vicious circle. So.
I have to agree with you there, Steve, that, you know, we don't want to change or create a systemic change again when we've got everything else working now according to design and, and really getting good satisfied space temps.
And even if it's an extra split, I mean, I, I look what the cost is to install a mini-split system or a radiant heat system and compare that with the cost that we're spending in not closing out and chasing this thing. Our goal is to have a classroom with proper ventilation and proper temperature, and there's more than one way to get there. All right, anything else on the Leger Middle School before we pay some bills here, or is there anyone else who wants to comment on anything that's been said? All right, with that, I'm going to move on, on the agenda. We've got some things to pay. Dan, I will expect in the June meeting that we will in fact have a probably an invoice to be able to, will that be the last invoice or will I get one more after that?
We do have the one more after that. I did, just to bring the committee up to speed, there was, there was some difficulties in having in the software that were rectified and that apologies that the bill didn't make it to press time and time for this meeting. It'll be out by the end of this week. It'll take you down to punch list values and, and some extra costs that we'll leave in a couple of trade line items to, you know, to ensure we have funds for closeout.
Okay, so those who listened to Colonial Pipeline Software that got you, all right. By the way, radon testing, same issue in the middle school, is that the same vendor or a different vendor?
Same.
All right, so they know the problem exists in both schools, right?
Yes.
The problem being they owe us the money. All right. So with that, I got some invoices to pay. Now, the first items, four, five, six and seven, I'm sorry, four, five and six are listed as they're as Fussin' O'Neil, but what we're actually doing is we're just moving money from our account to the, to the school BOE account so that we can reimburse them for that. So the first is, I actually do this in one motion. I can do that, right, Lisa?
Okay.
A motion is to approve realignment of funds for five and six on the agenda and the amount of $3,690. $2,500, $3,992.50 to reallocate funds from radon testing from the school's project back to the board of that accounts.
I can that motion.
The motion's been seconded?
I'll second that.
I thought I had a second, but we have.
Again, I second it, Steve.
All right, the motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, and the reason we're doing this and not just waiting to get the money back to Board of Ed is because their budget, you know, they had to be able to use things within years and things a little bit different than our project. So with that, all in favor of approving the transfer of funds, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Pete McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tyminski, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Pama Herb, I.
Okay, with that, the I's have it and that motion is approved. Next, we have item seven on the agenda. This is AIA application 21-762 from Silver Pictures Sullane Associates. Time and materials worked performed on a Leger Middle School. Invoice dated 1 April 2021, the amount of $598.50, and I move that we approve the invoice. It is in order.
Second, Pete McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Pete McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tyminski.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Pama Herb, I.
With that, the I's have it. Motion is approved. Next item eight is a motion to approve AIA application 21-758 from Silver Pictures Sullane Associates for the Galapagos School. Also, time and materials worked in the amount of $1,072.75 dated 1 April 2021. The invoice is in order and I move that we make payment.
I can Pete McIntyre.
Second by Mr. McIntyre, any discussion? Hearing nothing, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jaskiewicz, I.
Pete McIntyre, I.
Jerry Tyminski.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Pama Herb, I.
With that, the I's have it. That motion is approved. All right, the next items nine and 10. In our last meeting, Steve June, we had Dean at that meeting and he had indicated that he was going to go back and validate what we're saying on the, that those invoices were all paid in full in the past. Do you have anything else to add tonight, Steve, or am I still waiting to hear back from Dean?
Actually, Dean did send you over an email. I wrote it around 12:12 this afternoon.
Okay, I might not have seen that yet. You know what the email said?
Yeah, I'm trying to grab it up.
See, see if I can pull that up as well.
Might be faster.
Email's account he sent it to, so.
Yeah, he wrote, Beth, our business manager is still questioning the payment. Please read the handwritten notes on this, on the, on the enclosed, enclosed invoice. We agree that we received a check, but the amount was not what was invoiced. Can you please forward this on to whoever reviewed the information and have them reach out to Beth directly?
All right, Steve, would you send that on to my Gmail account as well? And you have my email on that and we'll follow up with that with the town finance director who did that research.
I'm doing it now.
And please send it to Lisa Sartori as well.
Okay.
All right, so we won't take any action on those tonight because there really is no action other than knowing, you know, what SPA's response is. Next item on the agenda is the Leger High School Track and Field Project. Wayne, I don't believe that there's anything on that, other than we have not heard back from the town finance or town council on the high school track and field scoreboard or fence. Is that correct?
Correct. Do we need to go to the finance meeting? Do you want me to go to the next meeting and ask them or?
I, they have all the information that they need and I know that they're, they're having some discussions there, but I will. Uh, I, they have all the information that they need, and I know that they're, they're having some discussions there, but I will, uh, uh, I believe they have all they want. I'll contact finance and see if there's a, there's a holdup or anything on that. Uh, I know finance meets, I think, then it'll meet again for another two weeks, I don't believe, but I'll find out.
All right, let me know. If I need to attend, I'll be gladly to, you know, attend.
Okay. And, uh, do we have any upcoming summer projects, uh, Wayne?
Yep, we've got a number of them. Um, as of last year, we're doing some classrooms at the high school and restrooms. Um, I just was wondering, do you want to deal with them the same way we dealt with last year?
Uh, we have to get, uh, so at our next meeting in two weeks, can you give us, uh, I mean, I know we're getting close to where you want to get that work lined up. Uh, can you have everything, uh, teed up, ready to go so that we have some particulars rather than just a?
Yep, absolutely.
We'll do that, I mean, in two weeks.
Yep. Now there's, uh, if the capital, uh, list passes in budget, um, there are some programs or items coming up, um, that probably will be, um, PMBC related or possibly related. Um, there are, um, two of them that can be, that would like to move forward and as quickly as possible. Uh, one is the, um, capital item to replace the control system at Gallup Hill for the building management system, which has failed. So we're pretty much walking through that manually. There are little bits and pieces that are still operating.
Who, who, start, run that by me again, the Gallup Hill School?
No, uh, Gales Ferry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, they shouldn't be failing in Gallup Hill School yet.
Oh, oh, I just gave Dan a heart attack. Um, no, Gales Ferry, um, that system was twenty years old, uh, can no longer get parts for it. It's not supported. Um, so we're, we're kind of limping through right now to, we limp through this heating season to get it operating and keep it operating. Um, so that is on the capital, uh, list to, uh, replace that. Uh, so we want to move on that as quickly as possible. Um, another one is the auditorium at the high school. Um, that is something that, um, could be done. We can shut the auditor and the stage area down, um, during the school year. Um, it shouldn't be that long a project, two to three weeks. Uh, but again, that's something that's going to need some planning and design and, and other stuff that should, if we can get that moving over the summer would be good. Um, and just as a heads up, not that they're critical at this point to, to move forward on over the summer, but there are three roof projects, the central office, Gales Ferry and the Juliette Long, along with Solar on those two buildings. Um, that, um, we'll have a little bit of a timely process that if we can move those forward, um, we probably want to get some designs in place by, uh, early January to go to bid, to get some decent pricing.
Okay. Are they planned to be independent projects or all three of those roofs under one contract?
Well, we can do them under one contract, but they have to be individual projects based on school facilities for the recall.
Am I correct that the Board of Ed Central Office would not be state reimbursed at all, correct?
No, uh, Board of Ed will be reimbursed at fifty percent of the normal rate.
Fifty percent of our normal reimbursement rate?
Yes. So it'd be thirty-one percent or thirty-three percent, whatever half of it is.
Okay. And since that building is now fully occupied by the Board of Ed and not shared with Perks and Rec, correct?
Correct. If it was shared, it wouldn't be reimbursable.
That's what, okay, got it. All right, um, thank you. Uh, anything else? It's a special meeting, so we can't really bring it up. Um, thank you for being on here tonight. Uh, we really need to get these punch list items closed out and, uh, more importantly, we need to, um, file the, um, our, we have not filed a reimbursement for the state in a while. That needs to be done, the ED, uh, oh, four, nine forms, uh, for reimbursement, uh, for partial. We need to see what else we can get from the state now, so we don't have to wait any longer for that portion.
Marcia sends it over, I can file it.
Okay. And you have access to that system now?
I believe so.
Okay.
I haven't actually logged on, but we believe we do.
Actually, contact Marcia because I believe that, uh, again, I don't, uh, we haven't done one of these in a while and I don't know what, um, was in the last filing that we put in. So when you get in the system, pull that up so she can match that up. And we can make sure that we're submitting appropriately on both.
Okay, no problem.
All right. Anything else? If not, I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
On favor?
I.
I.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Good night, guys.
Thank you, Mark. So Lisa, did you see, uh, we missed a, a couple of change orders that I, that Steve and I processed last week. I just bounced them to you again, just so that we have.
You know what? I just saw those. They were in my bag. Is it two twenty? But, um, is it two twenty-five and two twenty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, I will put those on for next time.
Okay.
For the next meeting. Yeah. Sorry, I just saw them. So I'll put them on next time.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for all your help.
All right.